The school board meeting is called to order. Will you please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. Garza, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Chair Seberg here. Vice Chair Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Hollingsworth.
Here.
Mrs. Brooks.
Here.
Mrs. Spall.
Here.
Mrs. Bressia.
Here.
Mr. BP. Ms. Island.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you to everyone that has come to the school board meeting tonight. Dr. Newman, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
May I get a motion for approval of the public meeting agenda?
Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, second by Mr. Hollingsworth, that the school board, the city of Manassas, approve the public meeting agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. This evening, we have several superintendent's spotlights and announcements. Mrs. Radford, would you please start us off?
Thank you, and good evening Chair Seberg, to other members of the board, and greetings to everyone that has joined us on this evening. I know that a lot of people are here for some very special recognitions. At this time, we'll start things off with a proclamation that is will be read by Mrs. Brooks.
Thank you, Ms. Radford. We read this proclamation each year, and it is included in our consent agenda that will be voted on tonight. Whereas, Manassas City Public Schools is committed to creating an inclusive, safe, caring, and challenging learning environment viewed through an equity lens; and whereas, the city of Manassas recognizes the importance of equality and freedom of discrimination; and whereas, the Manassas City Council has adopted a pride proclamation annually since 2017; and whereas, the Commonwealth of Virginia passed the Virginia Values Act prohibiting discrimination in public places against members of the LGBTQ+ community; and whereas, the Human Rights Campaign believes that LGBTQ+ individuals must be insured equality and embraced as full members of society; and whereas, the National Institute of Health and National Education Association recognize that LGBTQ+ youth and teens are at increased risk of violence, discrimination, and have higher suicide rates; and whereas, Manassas City Public Schools are an integral part of the greater Manassas City community; and whereas, the staff of Manassas City Public Schools are valued community members; and whereas, it is imperative that students and staff alike, regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers, educators, and community leaders. Now therefore, the Manassas City School Board proclaims June 2023 to be the LGBTQ+ Pride Month, and urges our citizens and community members to recognize the value of contributions made by LGBTQ+ staff and students, and actively promote the principles of equality and liberty. Be it further proclaimed that Manassas City School Board urges all to respect and honor our diverse community, and celebrate and build a culture of inclusivity and equity, both during Pride Month and the rest of the year.
Thank you, Mrs. Brooks, and applause is appropriate. Thank you, Mrs. Radford, for continuing our spotlights this evening.
At this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Williams and Ms. Spall, two of our school board members, who will do another recognition for us.
Well, now is the time of year, the end of the year, where we have to say goodbye to our 2022-2023 school board representatives. And so I want to call Ms. Island. And I saw Mr. BP back there. Does she walk in?
Yep, she's here.
Can't see her. So why don't the two of you come on down? On behalf of the board, we want to thank you for your service. The two of you done an amazing job this year, and we truly appreciate all the support and comments you have made on behalf of your fellow students. All right, one more thing prior to us taking a picture. Mr. BP misses. Mr. BP, she is a senior this year, so she will be graduating. And I've got her a special gift that the board does not know what I got, but it's very special, and it really means a lot, and it's from all of us. So I want to thank you, and I want to congratulate you. And you did choose VCU, correct? So congratulations on your continuing education.
And we certainly do appreciate the input and influence of our student representatives. So thank you both ladies. Next, we'd like to recognize a special group of students. The City of Manassas Beautification Committee hosted the 39th Annual Arbor Day Celebration at Harris Pavilion on Friday, April 28. Each year, Manassas City Schools joins the City of Manassas, the Virginia Department of Forestry, and other partners for the program. This year's theme was Trees Bring Us Together. First place winners of the 2023 Arbor Day contest are here tonight, and I would like to call them forward at this time. Our grand prize winner is a second grader from Round Elementary, Allison Lovo Jimenez.
Make sure you stay there, Allison.
From Round Elementary, kindergartner, first place Sylvia Ung. From Round Elementary School, first place winner Jason Cortez Vasquez. From Round Elementary School, second grader, first place winner Emma Passlib. From Round Elementary for third grade, Amelia Ward. And for fourth grade, first place from Round, Nahomi Cristalis. Congratulations to all of these young artists. These are our first place winners. Onto more art recognitions. Two Manassas City Public School students received first place in the Virginia School Boards Association's Northeastern Regional Art Contest on May 8, 2023. The VSBA Regional Art Contest was started in 1989 to promote the artistic talents of Virginia's public school students. For each of the nine VSBA regions, a winner is chosen for the elementary, middle, and high school levels. The first student we'd like to recognize is Kayden Gist from Baldwin Elementary School. We do have their artwork, so hold on just one moment. Our next student winner is Marciano Santiago Lopez, an eighth grader at Metz Middle School. All right. Her piece was also the first place for the Division Art Show. You can see it right there on the screen. And I think we have Kayden's as well. Thank you. Both students winning art will be framed and placed, displayed in the offices of the VSBA in Charlottesville. So congratulations to both of them. And that really is a huge accomplishment. That was among students in the state. So congratulations, Kayden. The Division Art Show, featuring K through 12 student artwork from each of our schools, was held on Friday, April 21 at Osborne High School. Prizes were awarded for first, second, and third place, as well as honorable mention. Tonight, we are pleased to recognize our first place winners. From Hayden Elementary School, Renad Abaldaram. From Round Elementary School, Rehan Alimi. From Dean Elementary School, Alina Hernandez. From Baldwin Elementary School, Sarah Kasam.
She's coming on down?
From Weems Elementary School, Nina Argote. From Mayfield, first place winner Ashley Lopez Valle. From Baldwin Intermediate School, first place winner Danica Smith. I mentioned earlier, our Metz winner for first place was Marciano Santiago Lopez, who couldn't be here tonight. And from Osborne High School, first place winner AJ Lopez Cardoso. Okay, if Anna French is here, could you please come forward from Osborne High School? Now let me tell you why Anna is being recognized tonight. Anna is a senior at Osborne. She recently created the art for the Storybook Walk for the city of Manassas, which is on display behind Metz Middle School, and features the character Bug, who goes on journeys to find dragons. The bilingual story covers about a .3-mile walk behind Metz, and will be unveiled during a ceremony tomorrow. Dr. Newman, the mayor, and other dignitaries will be on site for the unveiling. Anna also painted murals in the science, art, and kindergarten courtyard at Round Elementary School, which you can see on the screen now, using imagery around words such as create, engage, imagine, explore, and learn. Yesterday, Round students had the opportunity to view their beautiful new courtyard and to meet the artist. We have a couple of those pictures on the screen that you were able to see, and we want to congratulate her for being tapped to do this project. What a wonderful job she did. At this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Arnaz Dotavala, who will share a presentation about our Osborne Skills USA group.
Great. Well, thank you so much for having us here today. I do want to start by thanking the advisors. Mr. Black, the criminal justice teacher, Ms. Connors. I don't think she's here, but she's our photography teacher. Ms. Ingles Whitaker, our administrator. Special detective, no. I apologize. I will say Dranko, TJ, and Captain Petty. My apologies. It's been a long day. But thank you so much. We really couldn't have done this without a great team and the support from all of you. So just a little bit, we recently came back. We traveled to Virginia Beach on April 21 through 23. And as you know, we were quite successful there. Some of the contestants by program, as you can see. We definitely, it wasn't just the contest, the program contest. It was also about leadership. We came back with two state officers. Our students went in for prepared speech, pre-produced essays, extemporaneous writing, and so on and so forth. So we definitely are trying to broaden our horizons with the types of competitions that we participate in. Our state officers, they had to compete amongst others. So if I can have them just stand where they are. Our two state officers are Stephanie Cruz Garcia and Shayla Gonzalez. We are not sure what the capacity will be for them, but as you know, last year, we had Nalan Theodore, who was our president. We're hoping president and vice president when, by the time we come back from Nationals, but we'll take anything. We're proud of them. I apologize. Crime scene investigation took gold. Leslie, it was a team of three, Leslie DiAravella, Stephanie Cruz Garcia, and Danny Diaz. Thank you. The team of three. Danny. We had our pre-produced essay and extemporaneous writing by Kimora Payne. She took two silvers. I did not add the extemporaneous writing over here, but she did it onsite. Male care team was Gabriela Sosa and her model Kelly Hurtado. And I believe they competed against 17 or 18 other teams, and they took first place. The criminal justice, Brianna Castro. She took the gold. And if you notice on the slides, I have added the banners that they, the announcements that they put out there. So of course, our school was going crazy seeing these things. But, okay, there we go. Kimora again, for her extemporaneous. Prepared speech by our very own Sydney Radford, Ms. Radford's daughter. She took silver. And photography, Aileen is not here, but she took first place. So all in all, we came back with six golds and three silvers. It was a very successful trip. We did have our fantasy mannequin contestants. Please stand up. Marissa Suchetepas, Ashley Camargo, Shayla Gonzalez. We also had Yvette. Yvette also for her. Yvette had a tough competition for Job Skills Demonstration A. It is one of those cutthroat competitions where it's, you know. But we're very proud of them as well. So this is the team we're taking to Nationals. Nationals will be in Atlanta, Georgia. Shayla Gonzalez and Stephanie Cruz Garcia will be traveling before we do, on June 16, with Ms. Betsy Ingles Whitaker. And then the rest of us will travel on June 19 through the 24. It is a one-week-long trip, and our contestants will compete for three days straight. So it will be Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursday, Friday. We will know the results Saturday. We come home. So we wish them all the best.
And their advisor earned an award, a very distinct honor. She's like in the Hall of Fame for Skills USA. So Manassas was very well represented at the state competition. So we want to congratulate all of them. And if we can get all of these red jackets up here to the front, we'd like to take a group picture. Well, before Ms. Dotavala takes her seat, she has another group of students who did something very awesome. And so she's going to go ahead and recognize them at this time.
So recently, I apologize. Recently, our cosmetology program students, 10 students, attempted the theory and practical exam, and they were very successful. But before we call them up, I do want to tell you a little bit about the rigor of the cosmetology exam. A lot of times, people tend to think that the cosmetology program is all about just doing hair, making people feel pretty. And our group will tell you that it is a lot more than that. There is a lot of chemical reactions that they learn about, the anatomy, the physiology, the chemistry, a lot of geometry involved in it, and the angles, and so on. So there is a very intense and rigorous preparation that starts around January. Am I right? Around January. And these students stayed after every Wednesday. They chose the day. They started to stay every Wednesday. And then as we got a little bit closer to the exam, they started to stay literally every day. They came in on Saturdays. They came in on Sundays. And here we are. We have some fantastic results. Their grades were in the 90s and so on, so we're very, very proud of them. And these students are, and they are completely licensed, with job offers waiting for them. Gabriela Benitez Past. Ashley Camargo. Michelle Campus. Carolina Diaz. Sofia Naterano. Aziri Mendoza. Zuhedi Palmer, she's not here. Kimora Payne. Anaya Powell. And Marissa Suchetepas. Congratulations, ladies. You made me very proud.
We'll take a picture with them. But I also want to add, did you hear what she said? That they are licensed cosmetologists now? They are coming out of high school already prepared to work in a salon because they know their stuff. So we want to congratulate them for that accomplishment. You all, take a seat for now. It's robotics. You want to take a seat? We have another presentation, but it'll be a minute, so you can take your seats. Yeah, okay. Next, I tell you, Mr. Flugrath is just on tonight. Osborne High School Robotics Competition Season. We'd like to recognize their season right now. And so Dr. Chodari is here, and she's going to share some of the information about what they've been doing this season.
Good evening, Manassas City School Board. Thank you for inviting Osborne High School Robotics Team to present the spotlights and showcase our students' achievements. We continue to be amazed by what our students accomplished each week. From the previous season... From the previous season to the end of the competition season, our students demonstrated determination, hard work, and commitment, daily and weekly. We have witnessed their individual success, team success, collective success of learning, skill-building, problem-solving, memories made, obstacles overcome, goals realized, and friendships established. I'm very proud of our seniors and group leaders, Sebastian, Zach, Max, Kyle, Mary Joycey, Jessie, Dimas, and many more in this group, who brought their experience and leadership skills to guide the new team members and prepare them for the competition. I thank our dedicated key individuals, Mr. Frederick, Mr. Ortega, and Mr. Pugmire, for coaching and training our students. Many sincere, my sincere thanks to our sponsors, the Manassas City Foundation, Education Foundation, our parent volunteers, alumni mentors, and our new faculty advisor this year, Mr. Leonard Newman, for their active support and time involvement throughout the year. Thank you for your respect, responsibility, and pride toward Osborne High School Robotics Team. Now I turn this over to our students and leaders, who will share their experience of creating the robot and challenges they faced.
Good evening, members of the school board. I'm MJ Yassa. I'm the project manager and team lead of the OHS Robotics Team. I'd like to start off by thanking you for your time and talking a bit about what the team does. So we are a first robotics competition team, which is one of the more complex first competitions. The first Saturday of January is the date of our kickoff annually. From then, we have about six to seven weeks to brainstorm, design, assemble, power, and code until we have a competition-ready robot. This year, our challenge was to pick up cubes and cones from either the floor or a series of pickup stations and place them on two shelves varying in heights and distances from the robot. Our team is split into three main groups, mechanical, electrical, and software. The mechanical team is in charge of the main design of the robot, manufacturing custom parts, and the assembly of the robot. Many people usually think of mechanics when they think about robots, but a robot is nothing without those who give the robot life. The electrical and software teams. Without the electrical team, our robot wouldn't have power, our motors wouldn't run, our pistons wouldn't open and close, and most importantly, our LEDs would not shine. Finally, we have our software team, which really gets everything running. They give our robot the instructions that really bring it to life. Of course, not all members of the team start off with the knowledge they leave with. Before competition season, mentors and veteran members of the team teach new members skills that interest them. I've been on the team for two years now. In those two years, I've achieved many things I never imagined of achieving. And I've also learned the ins and outs of robot mechanics, how to use design softwares, and more with the help of our mentors and student leads. I enjoy robotics each year because every year is a new song. Each year is a new challenge. We get to design a new robot, and we get to gain new friends and teammates. I'd like to hand over the mic to Mr. Newman now.
Right, so there's the robot up there. So as I said, I am a new faculty advisor this year. I have worked with Metz's Robotics Team for many, many years. For many, many years, and I first want to thank the Robotics Team for inviting Metz over this year. This year, we met, both teams met in the Osborne Maker Space, and it was interesting to see the middle schoolers learning from the high schoolers and the high schoolers getting to work with the middle schoolers. MJ was talking a lot about the programming and the building of the robot, but the first robotics competition has another tagline that it's more than robotics. There's a lot more involved than what you see out on the competition field. There is marketing, there is finding sponsorships, graphic design, T-shirt design, all of those type of things. So I'd encourage anyone that's listening this evening, if your student has even the slightest interest in what robotics could offer them, to reach out to us. We can find a spot for anybody that is interested. And following Ms. Dottavala, we just found out, well, I just found out, that Skills USA actually has two robotics challenges as part of their program, so we'll be looking to extend over into that also next year. And so finally, Mr. Ortega, the lead mentor.
I'd like to thank the board for inviting us. So I would really like to thank all our mentors. Without them, this team would not survive. I'd especially like to thank our faculty advisors, Dr. Chodari, Mr. Newman, some parent mentors. They started out just coming as parents, and all of a sudden, they became mentors. Mr. Johnson, Mr. Steinbeck, Mr. Sugarman. I'd like to also start with Mr. Scott Pugmire, who's our software mentor, who's been with the team, I believe, seven or eight years. But the most important person I really want to thank is Dave Frederick. Without Dave, this team would not exist. We would not get to the level we have done. He is there all the time, after school, in the evenings, on the weekends. He comes in on his own. He does a lot of things and teaching. You have any student that is interested, Mr. Frederick is there to show them and guide them with that. So I really want to say an outstanding job he does and thank him. I'd also like to thank the school board members that attended our sessions, we were working, and that even provided lunch, which was absolutely great. I'd like to just leave with this one last challenge, is that members of the board that have not seen our robotics team, come next year. You will learn how well these students can do under pressure, what they learn, all the activity. I'd like for the school administration to step up, keep coming more, add more to this program. I also forgot to thank Dr. Newman for coming to our districts, spending hours with us, giving encouragement, cheering on the team. With that, that's the support we need. And again, I thank all of you for letting us here. And again, I would like every one of you to understand and look at our program, to see the futures of all these engineers that will go on and achieve their goals. Thank you.
What a powerful experience our students have by working together with so many professionals in our community and representing Osborne High School. So congratulations, guys. Thank you so much. Did we have any art show winners that are here tonight that were not recognized? No? Okay. All right. Thank you. You all may remember a couple of weeks ago, actually at our last meeting, I did a spotlight on our pre-K program. And one other thing that I wanted to do this season was to bring some contrast, to show our early learners, and then also fast-forward to our high schoolers and do the spotlight on our Saturday Learning Seminar. I've always been so impressed with the fact that we have so many volunteers that show up on a Saturday morning to work with our students. And you have students at all different levels, not only grade levels, but even in the ways that they learn, to be able to come out and find support and resources from teachers and parents and others that show up there on Saturdays, and that is on their own free will. So you have volunteers there, and you have students that come out, and I tell you, it's such an impressive thing to see. So I asked Dr. Hogan, Ms. Dottavala, Mr. Flugrath if it was okay for them to come tonight and just share a little bit, because I don't think that our community or our internal families really know the detail that goes into pulling that off as often as they do. So at this time, I think I'm turning over to Ms. Dottavala.
Saturday Learning Seminar has been, I know many of you have visited us during the Saturday Learning Seminar, and it is quite a sight to see with all the children eating or studying and so on and so forth. So we believe that at Osborne High School, Saturday Learning Seminar supports our four pillars, the inclusive and collaborative learning environment, culture and caring, quality workplace, workforce, strong family and community partnerships, and so on. And of course, we uphold our mission and vision of the school. This year, we had nineteen Saturday Learning Seminars, and they ran from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And, you know, of course, we love to say our words, hashtag One Osborne, you know, everybody's invited. To prepare for the Saturday Learning Seminar and to make it easy for our teachers and our students, we created Schoolology Resource for our teachers, and we did PDs and so on. And as soon as they go here, as soon as they go here with their Saturday Learning Schoolology course, they are able to find all the information, who attended, who didn't attend, and this was available to all of our teachers across Osborne, not just the Saturday Learning Seminar. The map that you, I'm not sure why I'm, okay. The map that I, that you see over here, we needed to organize our library. A lot of times, our students came up and said, where's this teacher or where's this program? So we quickly made a map and made sure that the students were able to find the resources that they needed quickly. We did our, there was a staff PD, which sort of oriented all of the teachers of what Saturday Learning Seminar is and what its resources are. And we also did the same seminar during advisory lessons for our students in both English and Spanish. So we hope. The culture and caring piece, Uncle Rico's did a fantastic job. They always, their folks from there were always smiling, they set up, they were always feeding our students and so on, delicious breakfast, and of course, we supplemented with all the other stuff as well. So it was definitely, they were very well-fed, let's put it that way. And many times, our students came for the breakfast, and that was okay too, because sometimes we would coax them to, okay, go ahead, turn on your computer now. And these are the over forty of our capable teachers who made Saturday Learning Seminar a huge success. Again, they could choose when they wanted to come and so on, but most of them came pretty much every time. These are thirty extremely capable staff. Of course, as you know, it takes an army to run something like this, our custodians, school transportation, administration, and so on. So it's not just Dr. Hogan and myself, it's also Mr. Flugrath, and Ms. Ingalls Whitaker, and so many more, Ms. Kreske, and Ms. Vincente, and so on, and Ms. Belint, who helped us out. And our volunteers, we could not have done this without our student volunteers. Many of these volunteers were part of the Positive Change Ambassadors, or National Technical Honor Society, or Skills USA, or any other club. We opened it up. Justin McNeil, the second name down, is, she received a scholarship today from Bull Run Rotary, but she is also one of the more constant volunteers that without her, I felt like I was going to fall apart, but she did a fantastic job. She will, we do have our last Saturday Learning Seminar this Saturday, and she will be there as well. To give you an idea, 2,666 students participated throughout the year, and this is not including last Saturday's numbers or this Saturday's numbers. So I believe that, I'm hoping that pretty much all our school came at some point. And these are some of the student comments. We have a survey, but having them write some of these comments, so, you know, they're yes, no, they're more apt to do that, but these are some of the comments that, you know, are students' real comments. So again, we love being engaged, empowered, and excelling at our hashtag One Osborne. Of course.
Good evening, and my name is Carla Hogan, and I would like to publicly say the amount of work, organization, collaboration that Ms. Dottavala brought for this entire program is outstanding. She is gracious, she is very humble, she is kind, but most importantly, she believes in the success for all of our students. I just want to make sure that everybody understands how much work. She was there almost every Saturday. We did have other volunteers, but she would always be willing to get there early, stay late, and I just want to say thank you, how much I've enjoyed working with her for the success of the program. Thank you.
So if any of the other Saturday Learning volunteers are here, administrators, Mr. Flugrath and others, please come up, and we'll take a picture with all of you. I said, any of the volunteers, too, teachers that are here that helped, you are welcome to come up too. Yes, Mr. Black? Thank you so much. Okay. Ms. Sarah Weaver, are you here? If you would come forward. Sarah Weaver has been recognized as the Prince William Arts Council Seifelt Award recipient for 2023 Outstanding Arts Educator. Ms. Weaver is the electives and library coordinator for Manassas City Public Schools, and as I stated, she's been named Outstanding Arts Educator by the Prince William County Arts Council. She accepted her award during the 25th Annual Kathleen K. Seifelt Awards held May 8th at the Hilton Performing Arts Center. The Seifelt Awards were created over twenty-five years ago to honor individuals and organizations who sustain Kathleen K. Seifelt's legacy of public service and support for the cultural arts in Prince William, Manassas, and Manassas Park. The U.S. Congresswoman Abigail Spanberger recognized all of the Seifelt Award winners from the House floor on May 9th, and she stated, Sarah Weaver, this year's Outstanding Arts Educator, has been a consistent ally of the arts for more than a decade, as she served the Manassas City Public Schools community in several roles, including as Fine Arts Department Chair at Osborne High School. And so we want to congratulate her for this distinguished honor, and thank you so much for the work you do on behalf of Manassas City students. for the work you do on behalf of Manassas City students. Okay. Each year, the Manassas City Public Schools community is asked to nominate a deserving teacher to represent the division as its Washington Post Teacher of the Year. At the January 24 School Board Meeting, we presented the nominees from the Division's nine schools. However, due to the embargo requirements from the Washington Post, the division winner could not be announced until late April. Tonight, I am pleased to share that the MCPS nominee for the Washington Post Teacher of the Year is Ms. Leticia Foster. Ms. Foster is an ESOL teacher at Mayfield Intermediate School, and she's been with MCPS since August 2019. She is described as an exceptional educator who is dedicated to supporting her colleagues, her students, and their families. Her peers said her passion for teaching English language learners is unmatched. Her principal states, Ms. Foster ensures that all her students feel accepted and valued within her classroom and as part of our school. She can quickly identify the academic needs of each of her students and begin providing them with the support needed to start understanding the English language and applying it within the classroom and the community. You can read more about this dynamic educator on the MCPS website, and she has a banner that will be hanging outside of her building to indicate that she is this year's Washington Post Teacher of the Year. Congratulations, Ms. Foster. was an awesome day to see that. All right. For the past several years, Manassas City Public Schools Teacher Education and Mentor or Team Program has recognized educators that have seen great success as a beginning teacher, newly hired experienced teacher, or mentor teacher. The nomination process was changed this year so that any MCPS staff member could nominate a new beginning or newly hired teacher, leading to 34 teachers receiving nominations. We would like to offer congratulations to all the nominees for being recognized by their colleagues, and don't worry, I don't have all 34 here tonight, and demonstrating excellence as educators. Each winner was surprised at their school with flowers and a poster to display outside of their classroom. At this time, I would like to recognize the three team award winners for this year. I will share a snippet of what their nominators said about them. Our Beginning Teacher of the Year, Abigail Huser, seventh grade science teacher at Metz This person says, it is always exciting to step into Abigail's classroom. Quite often, you can hear the excitement of students doing hands-on and completing experiments that include making observations, recording results, and analyzing data. There really is not a front row seat in her classroom because she is constantly interacting with each student as she zigzags between student work areas and rotates around the classroom. Her lesson planning begins in her CLT meetings, where she works closely with the instructional facilitator to lead the collaboration of the seventh grade science team around aligning instruction and assessments to be VDOE standards, to the VDOE standards. Abigail demands the most from her students and athletes, yet she is very supportive and honest about their strengths and weaknesses in the classroom, on the volleyball court, and on the soccer field. We are grateful for all she does for the students and her colleagues at Metz, and I think her principal has joined us, so congratulations to you. Next, we have our newly hired Teacher of the Year, Akeen Hanson, Music and Chorus Her peer says, Ms. Hanson truly treats us each day as a fresh new opportunity for our students to learn in music class. She is always highly professional and has a calm, patient approach towards her students. She presents her expectations clearly and makes every effort to reach all of our students. Ms. Hanson has that remarkable teacher radar that can detect which students need her support, and she immediately takes them into her care. She often asks clarifying questions to make sure that she understands the work that she is assisting students with, and I can always rely on the support she provides aligning with the expectations and rigor of the assignment. Ms. Hanson has adapted well to the culture of our building and of MCPS, and is excited about improving on her practices for next year and is a treasure at Baldwin Intermediate School. Congratulations. And this is her principal and assistant principal, who have come to join her. And next, we have our Team Mentor of the Year, Brittany McCullen, second grade teacher at Hayden Elementary. Ms. McCullen has been a resource that I can lean on for anything. What I appreciate the most is that she will spend some of her personal planning time answering any questions I have and showing me how to do something new that I can implement in my own classroom. Ms. McCullen has helped me with planning meaningful activities or lessons for my class, has shared resources to help with whole group and small group instruction, and shared instructional strategies to keep my students engaged in instruction, both during small group and whole group. Ms. McCullen is very reliable, trustworthy, flexible, and adapts to any situation given to her. She has been so patient with me, as I am always going to her for various questions or concerns that I have, whether it be for management or instructional practices. Ms. McCullen has been nothing short of an amazing mentor. She's joined by her principal, Ms. Karis Brooks. Congratulations to you. They each have received posters that will hang outside of their classrooms so that people know who they are and how they shine bright for Manassas City Schools. So we'll take a group photo at this time. And thanks to Ms. Katie Keegan, our supervisor, our Director of Professional Learning, for stepping up and helping us tonight, as we recognize that team winners. The Support Employee Excellence Award has been established by the Manassas City Public Schools to recognize a support staff employee whose contributions to the Manassas City Public Schools exemplify the highest attributes of service. The employee that has gone beyond the call of duty to help excel in his or her day-to-day activities or has done something particularly noteworthy are reasons to nominate an MCPS Support Employee for this award. At this time, I will introduce the winners from each building and announce the division's overall winner publicly for the first time. From Baldwin Elementary School, Heather Bezic, kindergarten instructional assistant. Not only is Ms. Bezic an exceptional classroom and lead instructional assistant, but she is also an integral part of the daycare dismissal for the school at the end of the day. She took the lead in handling daycare dismissal two years ago and has since streamlined the process. She will personally call daycare centers to remind or inform them of school scheduling changes, and also provides daycare drivers with written notice several days in advance of scheduling changes. She is an integral member of Baldwin's School Improvement Leadership Team and a valued member of the Baldwin family. Next, from Baldwin Intermediate School, Angela Graham, Special Education Instructional Assistant Ms. Graham models excellence by performing her duties with full exuberance and tact. She is ready to tackle any assignment given to her. While she is the Special Education Instructional Assistant this year, she has taken the initiative and opportunity to also teach STEM. She goes above and beyond for her students and the colleagues that she works alongside. No task is ever too big or too small for her to help with, and we offer our congratulations. Next, from Hayden Elementary School, Special Education Instructional Assistant, Yehara You can always find Ms. Feliz Gonzalez at school and PTA events, helping teachers and students in multiple grade levels, or playing on the Hayden Kickball Team. She takes care to develop solid relationships with students and encourages them to try their best on a daily basis. Ms. Feliz Gonzalez completes assigned tasks efficiently, correctly, and before due dates. She initiates and anticipates student and staff needs and will substitute for teachers at a moment's notice. Congratulations to you, Ms. Feliz Gonzalez. Next, from Round Elementary School, Marilyn Garcia, Family Liaison. Marilyn Garcia does an excellent job of reaching out to parents that are in need and providing them with valuable resources. She will also follow up with them to ensure their needs are being met and that they are doing well. She has been instrumental in welcoming new parents and families to Round and guiding them through the process of becoming a part of the Round family. Congratulations to Ms. Garcia, thank you so much. Next, we have from Weems Elementary School, Gloria Membrino, Special Education Instructional Ms. Membrino gets to know not only the students that have IEPs or Individual Educational Plans, but also students. She values making connections with students. She knows many students in a variety of grade levels, and Round students are, I'm sorry, Weems students are comfortable with her. She's a Spanish speaker, which has been invaluable in many situations where students need someone who can really understand and provide assistance. Ms. Membrino helps all students who need help and works in a caring way to get to know all students. Next, from Mayfield Intermediate School, Susan Guzdowski, School Administrative Assistant Ms. Guzdowski epitomizes the hashtag "Mayfield is proud" motto. She shows her dedication to the school staff, students, parents, and community daily through her compassion and empathy for others. Her choice to excel despite the difficulty level honors needs and makes them a priority. Ms. Guzdowski regularly steps outside her comfort zone and reflects on past procedures and structures to improve support systems that help Mayfield function smoothly. Congratulations to you, Ms. Guzdowski. And from Osborne High School, from the digital, he's a digital learning assistant at the Device Assistance Desk, known as DAD, Mike Laverty. One of Mr. Laverty's colleagues stated that if one of her students has a computer issue that she is unable to resolve on her own, she will call Mr. Laverty before sending the student to the DAD desk. Many times, he is able to help over the phone. This keeps the student in the classroom, ready and able to learn. If there is a need to send the student, the call ahead of time lessens the stress level for everyone. He has never once told his colleague to quit calling. She says there is no better example of a relationship that provides support and maximizes success than the one that Mr. Laverty has with students and staff. Congratulations and thank you. We've got three more. You might have to scoot just a little bit. From the Central Office, Abdul Rahmet, Network Engineer. A colleague writes, Mr. Rahmet possesses a strong goal-oriented mentality and motivates teammates to pursue mutual goals. Another colleague writes, Abdul is a great team member who is always willing to help out on any issue. These are the traits that make Mr. Rahmet stand out at the Central Office and the Division. His positive demeanor each and every day, even in the midst of the regular challenges that occur in the world of IT, is a beacon to those around him, so much so that appreciative comments are often received for the work that he performs. Congratulations to you, and thank you so much. From our Transportation Department, Bus Driver, Gary Froen. Mr. Froen has an institutional knowledge of our schools and community network and needs. He can stay on that end. And needs. With a vested interest in the community, he understands the invaluable service of transporting our students to schools safely and on time each day, so they may have the opportunity to achieve the highest academic success. He serves as a role model to everyone with his consistent punctuality, friendly demeanor, and can-do attitude. On holidays, he will often dress in costume to uplift and bring joy to the faces of students and staff. Congratulations to you, Mr. Froen. And from Metz Middle School, Maricela Murray, Family Liaison. One example of how Ms. Murray has epitomized academic performance has been in her efforts to work with students, administration, and families to boost our communication effort and communication skills. to boost our communication efforts with the community, to ensure we have delivered information in a timely manner. Not only did she create processes that weren't in place for community members, she educated staff on how to better deliver information to them by providing strategies like speaking with parents of other languages versus speaking only through interpreters. These strategies help to improve how Metz families are able to assist their students from home academically and truly support the school's efforts to develop its young scholars. Ms. Murray also almost single-handedly worked to get the Metz PTSA back up and running, including canvassing to find parents to serve on the board and messaging staff and families to drive membership numbers to a respectable number. Upon being assigned to Metz, she requested to be placed in an area in the building where she could be readily accessible to families who enter the building. She is always willing to step in and work with families who are having challenges, and she is quick to assist with mentoring students who need an additional advocate. Ms. Murray attends nearly every Manassas City community event where she builds relationships and uses those relationships to create resources for her building. She quickly galvanizes a spirit of community wherever she, whenever she is out representing the school and always brings back ideas that help improve community relationships that support students and their families. For these reasons, Ms. Murray has been selected to be the 2023 MCPS Support Employee Excellence Award winner for Manassas City Public Schools. A banner will hang proudly at her school, Metz Middle School, indicating that she has been selected as this year's award winner for our division. Congratulations. All right, hold tight. I'll try to get everybody to kind of gather down here. Thank you all for your patience tonight. I know we had a lot of spotlights. This is our last meeting of the school year, so I really appreciate you and your patience. So, this is one that I actually hate to do. It's not my favorite. This is where we recognize our retirees for this year. And it's always a bittersweet thing when we know that these people have given a lot, not only to Manassas City Public Schools, but to public education. And so, we want to really just publicly appreciate them for all that they've done for our students, for our families. You know, they come from teachers to support employees and just valuable members of the Manassas City Public Schools' family and team. And so, it's my honor to recognize them tonight. Many of their schools are holding other events and things throughout the end of the school year. But tonight, we want to just acknowledge each of them. I'll tell you how many years they've been with Manassas City Schools, the service that they've provided, what school they come from. But please, in your leisure time, send them a note, stop by their school, and let them know how much you've really appreciated them. We have people that will be recognized tonight, running from one year in Manassas City Public Schools to 37 years in Manassas City Public Schools, dedicated service. So, these are in alphabetical order, I believe. So, we will start with Mr. Paul Borick, who's a math teacher, 17 years at Metz Middle School. Special education teacher at Osborne with one year of service at Manassas City, Daniel Chakoski. Instructional assistant in the special ed department with 17 years with Manassas City Schools from Mayfield, Kay Clark. With 19 years in Manassas City Public Schools, from Mayfield Intermediate, fifth-grade teacher Susan Demaria. With 34 years with Manassas City Public Schools, Hayden Elementary music teacher Craig Die. With 20 years with Manassas City Public Schools, from our transportation department, who's been a bus driver for special education, Mary Gray. School administrative associate one with 25 years in Manassas City Schools, Mayfield Intermediate, Susan Gudowski. We have a fourth-grade teacher from Hayden Elementary, Snackellis. 10 years with Manassas City Schools, kindergarten instructional assistant from Round Elementary, Jeanette Kohler. 18 years with Manassas City Schools, from Osborne High School, school security officer two, Richard McCleskey. Fifth-grade teacher with 33 years to Manassas City Schools, from Mayfield Intermediate, Janice Mernan. From our transportation department with 16 years at Manassas City Schools, bus driver Mary Milks. Our assessment specialist from Osborne High School with 26 years in Manassas City, Karen Murphy. Also from Osborne High School with 21 years in Manassas City, in-school detention assistant Sharon Outlaw. Our supervisor of accounting and grants management with 22 years in financial services, Ms. Jan Schoenberger. Second-grade teacher at Round Elementary School with 35 years of dedicated service to Manassas City, Jennifer Thompson. And with 30 years of service to Manassas City Schools, from Mayfield Intermediate, music teacher Brian Tressler. Wow, that's a lot of service. Wow. Ms. Harlow said we have three members of Osborne's first graduating class among these retirees. Once an eagle, always an eagle. And so, we appreciate all that you have done. This is really hard. I've worked with some of you for a long time, and you've been so faithful and dedicated to our students and our families, such smiling faces, just great attitudes. Thank you so much on behalf of the board and all of your adoring fans that are here tonight. Bless you. Thank you so much for everything, and go enjoy your life. Thank you. I believe we have a student that has arrived. Hold on one moment. Our division art show winner and the winner of the Virginia School Board Association Regional Art Show, Maricielo Santiago Lopez. Are you here? Can I get you all to come down one more time so we can?
Oh, I do?
Yes, I'm sorry. We were able to display her artwork just a little earlier, that beautiful self-portrait that was on the screen. So, I'm so glad she was able to make it tonight. Congratulations. This concludes our spotlights for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Radford, and thank you for everyone still with us this evening. Now, we're going to, I'm going to call for board committee reports. Academics committee is Chairman Carl Hollingsworth. Do you have a report?
Yes, thank you Chair Seber. The academic committee met on May 9th, 2023 to review the Virginia Preschool Initiative Program for three-year-olds. The pilot program will begin this fall at Round Elementary, and a full report will be presented to the school board at our next meeting.
Thank you, sir.
I believe. Is that correct? That's all I have.
Next up, policy committee.
No reports at this time.
Educational support committee, Mrs. Spall.
No report today. Thank you.
Finance committee, Mrs. Williams.
Yes, Mrs. Chair. On April 10th, 2023, the finance committee met to discuss city transfer of operating funds and future CIP projects. At this time, we will be, we will not be advancing any discussion to the full board.
Thank you very much. And personnel committee is chaired by Mrs. Brooks.
No, no reports at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will move along now to citizens' comments. Do we have, we don't have any citizens' comments. Okay, I'll move along and ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as modified.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mrs. Brooks, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as modified. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay, tonight on the discussion agenda, we have some new business. Student representatives for the 23-24 school year. Mrs. Williams.
All right, during a closed session on May 9th, on our May 9th meeting, the school board of the city of Manassas reviewed and approved Alicia Island and Ashley Bland to serve as the new school board student representatives for the 2023-2024 school year. So, today, we are happy to introduce both of these young ladies, and they are both here with us tonight. Thank you and congratulations.
Oh, yeah, you want a picture? All right, we're going to get a picture. Thank you, ladies. We look forward to working with you. We look forward to working with you all the next school year, starting with orientation very soon. I was gonna acknowledge the dignitaries in the audience. We had President Anna Di Maria, who's the president-elect for MEA, was here, and is she still here? Nope, I think she stepped out. But I did wanna acknowledge her for being here. And Mr. Osina was here. And Mr. Tim Di Maria, Commissioner of the Revenue. Thank you for joining us this evening. Next up on our discussion agenda is student achievement. We have a strategic plan update. Mr. Gaffeler, Executive Director of Student Achievement. Mr. Kurt Emel, Director of Federal Programs and Family Engagement, will provide an update on the strong family and community partnership pillar and family liaisons.
Good evening, Chairs.
Does it run out of juice?
Good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, members of the board, and Dr. Newman. Tonight, we, in keeping with our commitment to provide updates on the strategic plan, we are going to talk about the strong family and community partnerships. So over the course of the school year, we have provided periodic updates on the strategic plan, and tonight, one of our pillars, the strong family and community partnerships, we are going to present information on our family liaison program. This has been a priority for us here in the division, and this has been the first year of this program that we have implemented, starting in August. And so with that, I'm going to turn this over to our Director of Federal Programs and Family Engagement, Mr. Kurt Emel.
Good evening, Chairwoman Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens.
Can you bring it a little bit closer?
Is that better?
Better.
Better?
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairwoman Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, School Board, and Dr. Newman. My name is Kurt Emel. I'm the Director of Federal Programs and Family Engagement, and I have the honor to work with this dynamic group of individuals. So before I get started, I just have to say it's a good day for federal programs. Two liaisons recognized and an ESOL teacher as the Teacher of the Year. So I just have to put that out there. So as I was saying, I have the pleasure to work with these dynamic individuals. During this presentation, I'm gonna highlight for you some of the work that we've been doing, working towards developing strong community and family partnerships. MCPS began the process to develop the role of the family liaisons during the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Their essential duties were developed through examining very closely the strategic plan and looking at Dr. Stephen Constantino's Five Principles of Engaging Every Family Every Day. These principles are developing a culture that engages every family, communicate effectively and develop relationships, build family efficacy, engage every family in decision-making, and engage the greater community. And they align to our strategic objectives in our strategic plan through inclusive and collaborative learning environments, culture of caring, quality workforce, and of course, strong family and community partnerships. In working to build strong partnerships and an inclusive environment in all of our schools, liaisons have worked diligently to connect with our community partners. Listed are some of these partners that have been instrumental to connect our families with needed resources and services in order to facilitate homeschool connections. This work helps to create a culture and climate for family engagement and is an important step toward academic achievement, helping set the tone for inclusivity, meeting needs of our students so that our students are better able to meet the academic rigorous demands of school. Initially, the success of our liaisons and the work they are doing is shown in higher attendance rates at our school events and programming. This relates to our inclusive and collaborative learning environments. The work connects to the principle of building parental self-efficacy through engagement activities, as these highlighted activities work towards teaching families to engage in school with their student or students. Some targets for our liaisons in this first year have been to increase attendance at these events, as well as to educate our families on the importance of tools such as the Power School Parent Portal, in which parents learn how to access the portal, check the portal for grades, and also check for attendance. To support attendance specifically, our liaisons are part of a school-based team to help educate our families on attendance. Their role in these teams is to connect our families with the resources that might hinder our families and our students from getting the most out of their educational experience with our schools. This aligns to the principle of communicating effectively and developing relationships with our families we serve. In some cases, our families have a different cultural background and are in need of someone who can empathetically help them to understand the American school culture and the expectations of students and families, the potential disconnect between American school culture and home cultures, and to answer questions that they may have related to engaging in school and engaging with school staff. Family support is critical to student achievement. One of the greatest benefits of our liaison positions lies in helping our families to learn to help themselves, to develop the power or the knowledge to produce a desired result of success for their children. An example is educating families on school expectations through our Parents as Educational Partners Program, and using the Power School Portal, as well as other information technologies, so that the parents know how to be informed in order to make decisions that sets the stage for better student outcomes. Some of these things may be taken for granted, but for many of our families, the liaisons help them to be a person, to be, help them by being a person they can identify with and ask for help that is given with patience and grace. So this is an example of a resource list that we've been working on, and it's a work in progress, and this is housed in our student learning management system, otherwise known as Schoology. Many of our families need support related to the necessities of life. This example helps to be able to organize this information for all of our liaisons and other school personnel in order for us to have ready access in one place so that our liaisons, other school personnel, can be able to pass this information on, connect our families, and in some cases, our liaisons actually serve as an ambassador in order to help make connections for our families. So our next steps at the close of year one. As part of our mission, our purpose as an educational organization, we work to leverage the unique characteristics of our diverse community by providing supportive, equitable, and innovative learning environment that partners with families to empower our students to reach their fullest potential. One factor in this purpose is our school-based liaisons. They are the face of our schools and a connection with our families who may feel left aside or confused by the business of school. Our next steps are to continue to collaborate with all support departments and achievement in order to help our students to be as successful as they possibly can. We have learned that collaboration is only through effective communication internally and externally. We have learned that our parents want to be engaged, yet often they are unsure how to be engaged, especially when they're working two and three jobs. We will continue to work with our partners such as Georgetown South, the Manassas City Police Department, and the church and business organizations that have been critical in us reaching and connecting with our families, helping to get to know our families, and helping with the resources that our families need in order for our students to be better prepared to be in school. We will continue to fine-tune the connection between parents, school staff, and our community to support student academic achievement, facilitate communication. We will continue to collab, be collaborative with administrative teams in order to ensure inclusive and collaborative learning environments, and we will continue to listen to our families. One of the things that I hear the most from the families that I've talked to is that our liaisons are people that they identify with, and that our liaisons listen to them. And quite honestly, many families have expressed to me that they are sincerely grateful to have somebody who listens to them and pulls them into the school environment. So on the screen, I just have a few pictures. I have hundreds of pictures from this year, but I don't wanna take three hours. This is a snapshot of some of the work that the liaisons have been doing with other teachers and school personnel in our Parents as Educational Partners Program, and this is where they are working with parents, parents are working with them, and parents are working with each other on topics such as school, staff, and health, reports and communication, parent-teacher conferences, study skills and homework. They may have questions, and these questions are answered on why is their child identified for English for Speakers of Other Languages, or ESOL? Why is my child identified for special education? Because in some cases, some of our families come from backgrounds where there is no such thing as special education, or ESOL, or gifted and talented, as well as learning about the U.S. school system, what the expectations are, how sometimes what our teachers bring to the table is different, that expectation is different than what our parents are coming to the table with, and helping them to understand, and they're trying to find a common ground. Additional class instruction and supports are Schoology Parents Guide and classes on Schoology, as well as classes on Power School, Power School Parent Portal, and other information technologies, as well as graduation and career readiness, and of course, attendance. And this is just a snapshot of many of the liaisons in action with our community partners. Highlighted here is the work that they've done with Catholic Charities and the Latino Festival. But again, I'd like to thank publicly the many partners that we have, but most specifically Georgetown South. We've done a lot of work with Georgetown South, the Manassas Police Department, and many other church and business organizations in the community. And that is all I have to report on. I just have to say, this team of individuals, we are incredibly lucky to have. They are everywhere, anywhere, all the time. They are the first to respond. They are always out and about in almost every event that I attend, and they have a graciousness and a willingness to help and go above and beyond. You saw tonight, two liaisons that were celebrated for the work that they do. All of the liaisons, in my opinion, you know, deserve an award because they're really fantastic, not only individuals, but they're just fantastic at doing the work. So thank you.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Emel. Can you guys hear me? I like can't hear myself up here. Can you hear out there? Okay. Thank you for your presentation. It's, it's an honor to know these individuals, and we see them in the community. So we get to see the wonderful work that they're doing. Is there any statements or comments, questions from the board? Mrs. Brooks.
I just wanna say how proud I am and how thankful I am for all of the work that you all are doing, you and the liaisons and all other staff, because it's, it just warms my heart to see this outreach into the community, to draw in all of our community members, and you know, it's not, school is not like school in America everywhere else, and having experienced that as a child, I thank you for bringing our families into, you know, into our Manassas family and helping bridge that gap. So I commend you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I have a question. First, yes, thank you for your presentation. I know we're just in the beginning of this program, process, relationship-building, outreach, which I think is really important for, especially for our school system, and I also want to make sure everybody is aware that we do keep Victoria Diaz in our thoughts and prayers as she continues to, to recover. I have a question. I've been doing a little bit more digging on other school systems and who have utilized the liaisons. Are, is Manassas City Public Schools a member of the UNNPS system, which is by John Hopkins University and the National Network of Partnership Schools?
As far as the liaisons are concerned, no, but we are part of NAFSK, which is the, it's the National Family Engagement.
And do, do, I, I know this is our first year, and we, we have been really trying to figure out what it is that our communities need most, and I think throughout this year, we've really started to figure this out. Have, have you all kind of debriefed after this first year yet?
Yeah, actually, actually, we have. We just recently have, so, you know, I, I think I may have skipped a slide, which I didn't mean to. I do wanna say that, you know, a lot of the work that we do is not just with me as the Director of Federal Programs and Family Engagement. I'm a very team-oriented person, and oftentimes I work and I collaborate with our Executive Director of Communications, Ms. Al Radford, as well as the, as my Executive Director, Dr. Thomas, as well as the Executive Director of Student Achievement, Mr. Gaffeler, as well as the Director of Curriculum Instruction, and the Director of Special Education, and the Director of, I, it's very important to me that we do this right.
Yeah.
And it was very important for me from the outset to frame this correctly. So when we looked at, as I designed the job description, I based that off of research, really specifically research from the U.S. Department of Education, research from the Virginia Department of Education for FACE, which is Family and Community Engagement, and then also research from NAFSK, research from CERN, which is School, University Resource Network, and then also, of course, landing on Dr. Constantino's Principles for Engaging Families. From the outset, understanding the demographics of this community, being that I've been here since 2000, I've been an ESOL teacher here, I was an ESOL Specialist, now I'm the Director of Federal Programs, and ESOL, or Language Instruction and Education Programming, is one of the programs that I oversee, as well as, you know, the other federal programs. Understanding that our community poses for our division the necessity to look at what we do from a different lens. Family engagement somewhere else is somewhere else. Family engagement here in Manassas City has to take into account that we have such a variety of diversity in our city, of parents that truly wanna be engaged, but they are truly either find difficulty through communication to engage, or they find difficulty through time to be engaged, because as I said, many of our families work two jobs, many of our families work three jobs. Our families want the very best for their students, and in certain circumstances as well, our families are coming from different cultures where unlike the American school culture that I grew up in, where there were certain things that were just kinda understood, it's not understood for some of our families. We have to take the time and teach our families on what these expectations are, you know, why they're important, so not only just providing So, not only just providing information, but then also, one of the things that Dr. Constantino talks very much about is building parental self-efficacy, teaching our families, engaging our families in ways that are non-traditional, in order for our families to be able to acquire the skills that we assume all families have, but they may not, in order to be able to help them help their children, for us to be able to help their children. It is a very, I don't want to say logic model, but it's a very, like, continuous stream of helping each other in order to be able to help our students to attend, to attend to school when they're in school, and to become or maximize the potential of every child that comes to school. So, from the outset, we looked very diligently at the strategic plan and the purpose of each one of those pillars on the strategic plan, and we matched that to the theoretical framework of what would family engagement be for our division. Does that answer your question?
I think it does. Thank you.
Thank you for your question, Mrs. Breja.
Thank you for the great presentation. I want to say I am very excited about the family liaison program, like everybody up here. We see them out there in the community, you know, really making that difference. And I'm glad that now the public has a chance to hear this presentation, see them win two awards, that was great to see, and get to hear a little bit more about what this program is, why it's designed the way it is. I was wondering to start off with, under what circumstances are students and families, how are they referred to the family liaisons? How do they come to the family liaison's attention?
There's not a systematic referral process. The way it usually works is the liaisons, so one of our goals, as we started, was to integrate the liaisons into each one of the school communities and start to develop a school-based partner team, okay? So, there's not a referral process. The way it works is liaisons, they greet families as they come in. We were very strategic in how we placed their offices or making recommendations, because I don't have the power to place their offices, but make recommendations with the team of individuals that I was working with to develop these plans on where they would have the most visibility, okay? And then also, too, working specifically with their administrators, because their administrators are their supervisors. I only oversee what they do. I oversee the direction in which they go. But I work collaboratively with their administrators, with Ms. Radford, in order to help them to help our families. They supervise them, they evaluate them. But as part of this process, bringing the principals together with the liaisons and having multiple trainings based on those five principles and how they connect to the strategic plan. So, to answer your question, the liaisons are in and around the office very frequently, they're in and around the school. Sometimes as the parents come in, somebody in the office may say, hey, you want to touch base with Marilyn, or Maricela, or Kalen, or LeDoo, okay? Again, they're, they're in the mix. They're in that office area, there to support, there to assist, not as interpreters. There's a big distinction there. We have interpreters, and that's something that, you know, I also, part of my job is that as well. We have school-based interpreters. Sometimes they are called upon to interpret, but they're there really to be the ambassadors of the school and our school organization with our parents. So, there's not a referral process. Teachers may come to them and say, hey, you know, I noticed that, you know, Josue is really having a difficult time seeing the board. And so, maybe then the liaison might reach out to the parents and start talking to the parents and having a conversation, and we come to find out that Josue probably needs to see an ophthalmologist or an optometrist. Then we can connect them, or the liaisons can connect them to the optometrist. So, it's kind of like, I don't want to say all hands on deck, but kind of like a village-type thing, but there's not a referral process. It doesn't work that way.
Right. So, I was, you touched on this in your answer, and I just wanted to ask you to expand on it a little bit. I was actually a little surprised to hear the org structure of the family liaison program, that the building principal is here, and you're here, and Ms. Radford is here, and Mr. Gaffel, you know, it was a more complex, you know, organizational chart than I was expecting. And sometimes when that happens, people get onto different pages, and our poor family liaisons start getting potentially pulled in different directions. And so, I just wanted to ask and see, what is our process for?
Yeah, I'm the point of contact for central office for the liaisons. And again, I work collaboratively with all the people I mentioned. Central office is, I walk down the hallway, and there's Mr. Gaffeler, there's Dr. Thomas. It's not as disjointed as it may, as it may seem. With the principals, what we do is we pull them in during the principal meetings in order to be able to discuss, you know, challenges that the liaisons may be having, or, you know, what direction we're moving in, and like I said previously, to provide training for them to work with their liaisons.
Right. Because I can just foresee a situation, and if I'm thinking about my own time, you know, my own professional background, you know, a building principal might have one set of ideas for what this position, you know, oh, we need some help with the vaccination paperwork. Oh, hey, how about you come along and do this?
Yeah, so that's why I was saying next steps as we move forward, and through our debriefs that we've had, is communication, effective communication, not only with our families, but effective communication is internally and externally. So, part of the end of year one, you know, when I communicated previously, we talked about looking at the essential duties and potentially revisiting them, or potentially revising those essential duties to make sure that they're in line with the specific purpose. The ultimate purpose for the liaisons is to assist all school staff to connect with our families, and to assist in to be part of increasing student achievement.
Okay. Well, you have satisfied me. Thank you very much.
No, good. Thank you.
Mrs. Ball, do you have any questions?
Just briefly, I want to just commend you. I think that we've identified a critical need in our community and filled it with fidelity and integrity in the liaisons that we've chosen. So, I can't wait to see where we go next year, and, you know, how you work in year two to keep fulfilling that purpose. Thank you.
Vice Chair Stevens?
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for explaining the background and the theory behind how and why we chose to bring family liaisons into MCPS. I know it was a conversation that I first started hearing about prior to the pandemic, so this has been in the works for quite a while. It wasn't like, last year we decided to do it, this year we're doing it. You mentioned Dr. Constantino?
Yes.
And the book is Principles of Engagement?
No, the book is Engage Every Family.
Okay.
Yeah, the Five Principles for Family Engagement.
Okay, great.
And I have a copy I can send to you if you'd like.
Okay, yeah, I would love to read that, because it sounds, you know, that it's really important. It sounds that even some of us, myself included, could read something like that to gain a better understanding of how to support our families and how to interact and engage with our families. And I'm really happily pleasantly surprised to hear the PEP program attendance has increased by 129%.
Yeah, it actually has, and I think that's what I may have skipped. So, you know, we use a lot of metrics, but one of the metrics that, you know, being the programs that I oversee, okay? So, one of the programs that I oversee is Title III, and Title III is underwritten through, I mean, I'm sorry, PEP, Parents as Educational Partners, is underwritten through Title III. So, it's a, it's a Title III initiative. With that, it's probably the easiest of the different ways that we're measuring, it's the easiest one for me to get my fingers on, okay? And so, from '21 to '22 to '22, '23, we saw an increase of 129%. We also saw that the difference between doing, last year we did a lot of hybrid, we did a lot of Zoom PEP meetings, to the difference between face-to-face. Also, the quality of those meetings, and the quality of those meetings, not only because of the teachers that were involved, but also because of the liaisons that were involved. Because the liaisons bring a factor that is really hard to quantify. And that factor is our families trust these individuals. They identify with these individuals. Many of these individuals are from the same areas of the world that our families are from. So, it creates this spark in our families to want to participate more, to learn more, which is something that, you know, we're working very diligently on to capitalize and leverage into the future.
Thank you. And those are my only questions. Thank you.
And Mr. Emel, I will wrap it up by saying, thank you for your presentation. It's really rewarding to hear you talk about your role and the team's role in this and family engagement, and it's obviously something you're very passionate about, and that shows. And I know that we're all doing this because of the students. And when the families are engaged, when the families feel welcome, and when the families understand, they're going to help their students understand, and, and we'll all grow from that. So, thank you very much. Next up on our discussion agenda is employee compensation. The school board annually establishes and approves salary schedules and compensation for all our employees. And Ms. Wingfield, do you have something you need to present to us?
Good evening. I'm presenting the proposed salary schedules and compensation for the '23-'24 school year. A 5% increase has been proposed for our support, license, and administrative salary schedules. The minimum and max of each of these scales has been increased by 5%. The first scale being shown is the administrative scale. Okay. When the next scale we'll go to is the placement guide. The placement guide for new licensed staff was revised to reflect year-for-year teaching experience through 19 years of teaching. And the next scale we'll go to is the 200-day license scale. Shown here is the 200-day license scale, or the 10-month scale, for instructional staff. And then we'll go to 210-day scale. Shown here is the 200-day license scale, or the 10-and-a-half-month instructional scale. The next one is 220. This is the 220-day license scale, or the 11-month scale, for instructional staff. And the next one we'll go to is the support. This salary schedule identifies all the support positions and divisions with their grade, their step, their day count, and their number of work hours in a day. And you may notice on the last page that the bus drivers and bus driver trainers do not have a grade. These two positions were brought to market to place them on the current scale, which pay them below or above the market. And the next one we'll go to is the extra pay for extra duty. This compensation scale identifies extra pay for extra duties and coaching stipends And then the last one is our temporary rates of pay.
Are there any questions?
Any questions from the board? I know we went over this on our March 7 budget work session, and again, now, what is our next step, Mrs. Wingfield?
Approve it.
And that'll be at the next meeting, next business meeting. Any other questions or comments from anyone? Mrs. Breja?
And we did have a little bit of a correspondence before the meeting today, but I know you obviously had a very busy evening of preparations. So, I just wanted to clear, with regards to the 200-day contract, you know, I've heard a lot of feedback this year about Prince William County. Prince William County offers a 195-day contract, and that is what their contract physically says, that the teacher's sign is 195 days.
I don't have a copy of that contract. As I shared with you, the code that I forwarded you, it is Code of Virginia, where teachers, they have, it is identified as a 200-day contract, but it does not identify, it's up to each school division, how many days that they assign for their teachers.
Right.
You know, it is a law, they all have 200 days. It's just how many days is your school division going to assign you?
Right. And we sign one, or we did assign this past year 193 days. Was that correct?
To answer the question, Prince William's document that is given to their staff identifies the assigned days, not the number of days for the contract itself. It is a 200-day contract, but what they receive, it says 195 days. They're assigned 193, and they have two flex days to get to the 195 that they signed that they're going to work.
Okay. And our contract says 200 days.
Days. It does not identify the assigned days, which is, you approved 193, two adjustments were made throughout the year, so now it's down to 191 assigned days for this current school year.
Right. Now, calcu- this calculation where they, you know, our, theirs on the pen and ink says 195, and ours on the pen and ink says 200, does this impact, you know, how a daily rate is? No, it does not.
They're both paid off of a 200-day contract.
So, okay, so the extra pay for extra duties, and if somebody needs to take short-term disability, the daily rate calculation should factor in the same?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Ball?
Hi, I just want to clarify, I just want to clarify, all of the scales that you showed tonight, are they all going to get 5% increases?
Can you speak in the microphone so people can hear?
Yes, I can try. Can you hear me?
Just pull it to you.
EPEDs and the temporary salary scale, does everything get, okay?
No.
So, it's?
The, some, you know, different temporary rates were increased due to market, some EPEDs were increased, you know, the scales that consistently all went up 5% were the...
Excuse me, excuse me just a minute. Dr. Newman, did you wish to expand on that?
I think I understand the question. The question is that, is the 5% in the scales? That answer is correct, because that is what the board has approved in the February 28th, what day did we approve it?
I believe that's correct.
28th. Once we receive final numbers from the General Assembly, there is some funding on the city side that we need to work through, and then the board has agreed to add an additional 1%. All that could only change if we get a 7% All that could only change if we get a 7% from the General Assembly versus the 5 that's now. We would make that adjustment, because you will have 30 days, correct, Mr. Hawkins? After the General Assembly makes their final decision to amend your budget, which means we would go back and amend all the scales that you see to meet those. But the 5% is included, because that's the only number that's been approved so far.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Wingfield? All right, thank you very much. Next up on our agenda tonight, action agenda, finance and operations, the FY 2023-24 student fees and charges, building use fees and charges, and fee waiver policy. Vice Chair Stevens, do you have a comment, please?
Yes. At our last school board meeting, I believe it was, we approved the policy that would outline what specific charges are for all of these. When we vote on this action item, we will have to update the policy to reflect new changed fees.
And this has been presented to us a couple times. Is there anything else we need to know, Mr. Hawkins? It's all the same. Any questions from the board, any statements? Okay. Can I get a motion, please?
Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the 23-24 student fees and charges, I'm sorry, am I reading the right? Charges, billing, use fees, food services fees, charges, and fee waiver policy as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hollingsworth, second by Mrs. Brooks, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the 2023-2024 student fees and charges, building use fees, food service fees, and charges and fee waiver policy as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. We're going to move along to board members' comments. And I'll go first to our student liaisons. I'll first go to Ms. Island.
Hello. I would like, I know we've had.
Really close.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Is it better now? Okay. Hello. I know we have had an eventful school year, but sadly, it is already coming to a close. Before our night ends, I'd like to say thank you to Dr. Newman, Chair Seberg, the school board members, Ms. Garza, Mr. Hawkins, Ms. Radford, the principals, faculty, teachers, and students for creating such a loving and caring environment so the students can excel in all walks of life. Moving on, I know that a lot of students joke about how they can't wait for summer, but in actuality, these are the last few weeks, but in actuality, the last few weeks of school are always the saddest. I'm devastated to see the seniors go, especially Vaniel, but wish you all the utmost success, and I'm excited to see the people that you will become. I hope everyone enjoys summer break, and I cannot wait to see you all again for the 2023 to 2024 school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Island. Mr. Beebe, for your final and last comments as a student representative to the school board of the city of Manassas.
Good evening, everyone. First, I would like to say congratulations to all those who were recognized this evening, all the teachers, the students, and everyone that continues to make Manassas City a great school system. And now, to my last comments, I would like to say thank you to all the board members, past and present, Dr. Newman, Ms. Garza, and for everyone who showed all the love and care that I have been able to witness these past few years. I would also like to say thank you to the people who work with the city, such as Mr. Goffeller, Mr. Hawkins, Mr. Hawkins, Mrs. Radford, Ms. Golzon, and everybody else who works with the city that have helped create the experience I've had as a student representative. You all have given me an experience that I will be able to use for the rest of my life, and I'm truly grateful for that. I would also like to say thank you to my other representative, Alicia, and thank you for bringing your insight and grace to the board, because it only made the experience that much better, and I know these qualities will take you very far. I would like to say good luck to the future representatives, including Alicia and Ashley, and I hope you guys enjoy the experience as much as I did. Last but not least, as much as weird thank you this may sound, I would like to say the city of Manassas for choosing to renovate City Hall, because it brought us here to my elementary school where I started and will now get to end my journey in the school system. So, thank you, everyone.
Oh, my God. Thank you, Mr. Beebe. Mr. Hollingsworth, comments this evening?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to congratulate all the spotlight winners for everything that they've done and being recognized for. Most importantly, I want to recognize all the retirees for your commitment to excellence. It's not only a great reflection on yourselves, but it's a great reflection on our community, but most importantly, most importantly, all of our students. Again, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you. Mrs. Breschow.
I'm afraid to turn on the microphone now. Yeah, I want to, of course, wish hearty congratulations to everybody who was recognized tonight. My hand truly started hurting by the end from all the clapping we were doing. You know, graduations right around the corner. Congratulations to all graduates. I will unfortunately be unable to attend Osborne's graduation in person, as my daughter is graduating from preschool at the same exact day, on the, at the same exact time. So I have to obviously be there with her, but I will be with everybody in spirit as you cross that stage and take that big leap into the next chapter. Very proud of all of you. Good luck also to the test takers. It's test-taking season, and I know how stressful that can be, so good luck. I also want to put it out there, kindergarten registration is now open. I've got a four-year-old and a two-year-old. I have, I understand very thoroughly what all of the options are. If you have any questions about how Manassas City Public Schools can work for your family, please reach out. I'm very happy to talk it over with you, answer any questions for you. I also want to just put out an open call. Today, we briefly discussed our employee compensation. Compensation is a piece of the puzzle to creating a vibrant workforce, but if anybody out there in our workforce, our community, has any other ideas, please share them with us. This is a priority of ours to make sure all of our workers are feeling appreciated going forward. And I also want to acknowledge that this is the end of the very first school year of my very first term on the school board. I want to thank everybody for bearing with me through all the little bumps and bruises along the way, as I've gotten up to speed and we've all gotten used to each other. I know it has not been the most perfect of, it hasn't been the most perfect landing. We have had some turbulence, but I think that overall, we're all getting used to each other, and I've really enjoyed learning from everybody. I really appreciate everything that everybody does every single day. I'm looking forward to the next school year, where we can go to the next level. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Breschow. Mrs. Spall.
I did want to say congratulations to the school board reps, our Arbor Day Round Raccoon artists, VSBA art contest winners, all the Skills USA folks that came out tonight and represented us so well, and the future engineers, the licensed cosmetologists, the robotics, Saturday Learning Seminar volunteers. I really want to thank you guys for all that you do. Last week, I attended the Safe and Healthy Schools Advisory Committee. The group covered a lot of important topics, not the least of which were mental health resources for parents and teachers. They reviewed a community resource manual and focused on the E3 series to be hosted tomorrow night by Manassas City Public Schools and the Police Department. They talked about current drug trends, including a new elephant tranquilizer called a zombie drug, Xylazine, that is hitting the streets in DC, Maryland, and Virginia. And I was briefed on, you know, the updates for Revive Training for Staff, as well as Successful Vaccine Clinic hosted by the Student Health Services. So, I would say, in light of our proclamation tonight, I just wanted to do a shout-out to thank Three Monkeys Pub House, which is closing this Sunday, but has been kind of a safe haven for the LGBT community. So they've provided a service to us, and I'll be sad to see them leave. In reflecting on Mother's Day, I wanted to wish all the moms a belated Happy Mother's Day, but also to thank our mother mayor, Davis Younger, for her work on securing the old Town Inn property from Manassas to pursue new opportunities. I attended that sign removal on Saturday, and it was a great lesson in history, as well as a moving ceremony that looks forward to the future. On Saturday, I'll attend a Common Ground Gun Safety Roundtable, and as the first school system in the DMV area to implement Evolve scanners, safe schools are a foundational priority for me. I look forward to seeing anyone who can go to Anna French's walk display tomorrow. That should be very fun and exciting. Thanks again to, who was our Seafelt? Miss, why is, I can't think of her. Our Seafelt winner, Catherine Seafelt Award winner, Ms. Weaver. Yes, sorry, I didn't write it down. If I don't write it down, I can't say it, guys. I'm sorry. The Washington Post Teacher of the Year, Ms. Foster, all the support employees, including Ms. Murray, who's still here for their excellence. Thank you to all the retirees who have served us so well. Happy graduation, happy summer. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mrs. Spall. Mrs. Williams, comments this evening?
All right, of course. Being one of the last ones, I'm not going to repeat what everybody else has said, but of course, congratulations to all the spotlight winners. Without, especially our staff, without everybody, we wouldn't be here. Our support staff is just as important as our teachers. And, Mr. Beebe, it's been a pleasure working with you for the past two years, and oh my gosh, I almost, I almost cried when you said, you're ending where you began, that just, oh my gosh, it just made my heart so full to hear that. And I want to congratulate Ms. Island. She will be with us again, and I'm not sure if Ms. Bland is still over there. I can't see her over.
No.
Anyway, congratulations to both of you for being chosen to continue your work next year. I'm also glad I asked the question to Mr. Emo. You really, you really showed your passion for, for our community engagement. Thank you for that. With that, I just want to say happy graduation. Hats off, literally throw them up when you're done, because this class is part of that cohort that had to go through COVID. And what an awful experience that those kids have to go through, so they need to pat themselves on the back extra, extra. So, congratulations to all our graduates, and I can't wait to see you graduate. That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mrs. Brooks.
Thank you, Chair. I too want to say congratulations to all of our spotlights tonight, and thank you to our teachers and staff who are retiring. Your support and service for the Manassas City Public Schools is immensely, you know, thanked and appreciated. I also want to thank Mr. Beebe for her service on this, you know, as a student representative, and wish her well and good wishes. And I also want to congratulate and thank Ms. Island, and congratulate Ms. Bland on her appointment to be, you know, sitting with us and being our student representatives next year. And we're coming to the end of the year, so great job, everyone. Congratulations to our seniors. Thank you to our staff and teachers for taking care of our kids, and thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Brooks. Vice Chair Stevens.
Thank you. Of course, what everyone said, thank you to all of the, we're very proud of you. But I wanted to point out something that I think some of people miss. We're a small city, but did you see all those amazing kids who came up? All those award winners, all that talent? Sometimes that gets missed in the larger picture. And so when we think about our school division, think about all those kids who came up here tonight, all the amazing things they're doing, the talents and the skills that they have that they bring to our city. They're the people we need to be talking about. They're the folks who need to be in the news, the great kids we have, the kids who participated in Rock Fest last week, the kids who got the scholarships to college last week. Those are the people we need to be focusing about, on, and those are the people we need to be shouting loudest about. They're our heroes, and we're all very proud of them. And I also wanted to take a minute to talk about the MCPS Support Employee Excellent Awards winners. They're a perfect example of how every employee is an educator. Every employee makes a difference in our children's lives. They're a necessary part of the village that raises our kiddos and turns them into leaders. They're just as important as everybody else. We can never forget them. And then, I also wanted to point out this month, May is Mental Health Awareness Month, tomorrow night. Ms. Spall mentioned it, tomorrow night, 5:30, Osborne High School, the final E3 series of the year is on mental health. Please take a minute to participate. There will be 17 different resource groups, resources there to support you if you have questions or concerns. Take some time, head out, free Chick-fil-A. And then finally, well, not finally, actually, sorry. This past week, Ms. Williams and I were able to attend the VSBA Spring Networking Forum for the northeastern region in Virginia, and the topic was the teacher shortage. The presenters were from George Mason University, and they talked about plans, ideas, and processes to increase turnout and attendance in teacher preparation programs, because that's really where we're starting to lose our teachers. They're not going into the profession in the first place. So, that was where we also got to see our two award winners take first place, so that was very exciting. And then finally, along with Ms. Spall, I'll be attending the Common Ground Gun Safety Roundtable this coming Saturday from 11 to 1, to discuss what we, as a school division, do to keep our students safe in this ever-changing world that we're in. And then finally, everyone, good luck at the end of the year. It's almost over. The end is in sight. Graduations are around the corner, and then it's time to sit back and relax. So have a wonderful end of the school year.
Thank you, Vice Chair Stevens. I have a few comments, and then Dr. Newman's going to add something. Thank you, Mrs. Spall and Vice Chair Stevens, for highlighting the E3 series for tomorrow night on mental health. I want to thank my fellow board members for the pride proclamation, because it is an important statement for our students and our staff to know that they are supported and valued in Manassas City Public Schools. To our student reps, thanks for a great year. Vaniel, I've known you since kindergarten, right here at Jenny Dean, and I see your parents out in the audience, and I want to give you applause. Thank you for sharing, Vaniel, with us. It's just been a wonderful pleasure. And I wanted to remind everyone that graduation is at Eagle Bank Arena on Friday, May 26th, at noon, and you're all invited. The whole, the whole city is welcome to come out. We know that there's a city full of people that are supporting our students and would like to help celebrate you, so please come. And with that, I'll hand it to Dr. Newman to wrap it up.
In the light of spotlights, today I had an opportunity to go to Richmond with Mr. Goffeller. We had Chris Taylor, members from Micron, Mr. Park, Ms. Susannah Steen, former school board member Alex Igbal was highlighted as a former OHS alum that is working at Micron and how he navigated there. There was also a teacher who is currently teaching in Manassas Park for a class that we don't offer, because I asked why she didn't come back home. But she was also an Osborne alum. But we were recognized by the United States Department of Education for our work-based learning efforts. We were one of three school divisions in this great Commonwealth to be recognized today, so I just wanted to, in the light of spotlights, we were spotlighted by the highest educational organization in this country today. And also, last Friday, I know there's a lot of talk about the cycle that works, and those that love it, and those that are going to start loving it at some point, but we were asked, Mr. Goffeller and his staff, to go to All Saints, one of our private school partners, to go and provide professional development on the CLT process. So, the things that we are doing here are being noticed, and we've been asked to share those things with some of our private partners, so.
Dr. Newman, real quick, we were top three out of how many school divisions in the Commonwealth of Virginia?
It's 133, I believe, and we were three that were highlighted.
So, we were better than 130?
I am very excited about the work that we are doing, but yes.
So, anytime you hear anything about our school division, remember we were top three. And I like starting and ending a meeting with spotlights, so thank you, Dr. Newman. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas meeting adjourned?
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, second by Mrs. Brooks, that the school board meeting adjourned. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.